I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, we thought it might be nice to have a moment of silence for the loss of the student from Wyndham High School. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I am serving as the moderator for the election of the Board of Education. I'm sorry, the Board of Education Chair. The first business of order is the election of the Board of Education Chair. I need a motion and a second for nominations for Board Chair.
I'd like to nominate Lynn Hyde.
Okay. Motion and second, that nominations be closed? Vote in order, the names, I'm sorry, vote on motion nominating, so do we have a vote?
You have to have a motion to close the nominations.
Thank you. Okay, there it is. Okay, now we need to vote.
Now it needs to be seconded?
It needs to be seconded, I second it.
She seconded it, okay, now we need to vote. All in favor of, right.
Casey's not used to this.
I'm not used to this at all. I thought that was all in favor for the vote. She seconded the vote.
I seconded the vote, you have to vote on the motion.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, so now, all in favor of nominating Lynn Hyde for Board Chair?
All in favor of closing the nominations for Lynn Hyde for Board Chair.
We did that.
No, we didn't yet. Everybody didn't vote the first time, so that's what we're voting on. Thank you, Tracy.
All in favor, do we get a count?
That was everybody but Lynn. And did you abstain?
From voting to close the nomination, yes, I think so.
Lynn abstained.
Okay, so now we're voting on the actual motion for Board Chair.
Move that the secretary cast one vote in favor of Lynn Hyde. There's only one nominee.
Yeah, but maybe we don't all want to vote in your favor.
Yeah, I think we should let everybody vote.
That wasn't in the script?
We're voting on the nomination that's on the floor.
Okay.
Say it again.
All those in favor, the motion on the floor.
That was unanimous.
Unanimous. Okay, so now we have a Chair of the Board. And I can roll it over.
Right. So, next is the election of the Vice Chair for the Board of Education. Welcome, Ilda. So, I'll take a motion for Vice Chair.
I would nominate Tracy Lambert for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Nominate Mary. I'd like to nominate, nominate Mary Galucci for Vice Chair.
Is there a second on that?
I second.
So there are two nominations on the floor. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? So, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the nominations and then we'll have to take separate votes on the two nominees.
Move to close nominations for Vice Chair.
Is there a second? Is that already, but okay. All those in favor of closing the nominations? Okay, so the first name that was put on the floor was Tracy Lambert. All those in favor of voting for Tracy Lambert for Vice Chair? All those opposed? Any abstent?
You don't do an opposed.
Okay, you just do that, just, okay, thank you. Okay, so we've got two votes. All those in favor of voting for Mary Galucci for Vice Chair, please raise your hands. Okay, I'd say Mary Galucci wins. And then, lastly, we have to do Secretary. Next is the election of the Secretary for the Board of Education. I'll entertain a motion.
I nominate Jaime Gomez.
I second it.
Motion is made and nominated. Are there any other nominations?
I move to nominate Mark Doyle in an effort of non-partisanship, please.
Is there a second on that?
I second that.
Seconded by Lisa. Are there, although, are there any other nominations? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Move to close the nominations for Board Secretary.
Seconded. All those in favor of closing the nominations? So, the first name that's on the floor is Mark Doyle for Sec-
Actually, Jaime was the first.
Jaime was first, I'm sorry. Jaime Gomez for Secretary. All those in favor? I'd say that, that won. We could take a formal vote if you would like to, Mark?
No, it's okay.
Okay. So, we do have the new officers of the Board of Education and thank you, everybody, for participating. So, I just want to say, before we move on, that we do, I have the responsibility of making committee assignments. I am going to be appointing Mark Doyle to be the Chair of Finance and Audit Committee, Tracy Lambert to be the Chair of the School Planning and Design Committee, and Ilda Ray to be the Chair of the Policy Committee. And I have talked to most of you, I haven't had a chance yet to connect with Lisa, but I just want people to know that everybody is welcome to be on, you know, to put their name forward to be on any one of the committees as a committee member. But it should also be known that because these committees are advisory, we welcome participation from any Board members at any time in the committee meetings. So, for example, Janet Testa lets everybody know when all the meetings are and if you want to show up and participate and you're on the Board, you're welcome to do so. I would like it if everybody on the Board would let me know, either, you know, at the end of tonight's meeting or in the next day or so if there's a particular committee that you want to be on. I've heard from some of you, but not everybody. So, is that okay with folks? You just let me know? The Executive Committee is, are the three, Executive Committee, I mean, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary, but as with the other committees, that committee is open to anybody who wants to show up. Yeah, I'm about to do that. Yes, I'm about to do that. And I do want to welcome new members to the Board. We have Lisa Dunick. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we have Katina Caban Owen. Welcome.
Thank you.
We will be talking a little bit later on about our work together, but I do want to say that I hope that the Board can move forward and tackle some issues in addition to the standing committees that we have. My hope is that in early 2019, we can move forward to begin appointing some other working groups of this Board. I mean, they don't have to be Board members. I'm thinking of working groups that will not only include Board members as they would like to serve on those working groups, but community members and other experts and outside folks that might want to voluntarily work on these committees. And the committees that we've been talking about and I've been thinking about at this point include a committee on teacher retention and recruitment, a committee on teaching and curriculum, and a committee on community and civic engagement. And on that last one, that's one that's in particularly, I think, given what we've been through in the last year and the fact that we had to go to three-budget referenda. I think it's really important that we figure out how to work with people in the community to increase buy-in for what the Board of Education and our school district is trying to do, as well as two-way communication with members of the public and the Board about what people see and what they, you know, ideas that they have. And I think by putting together a work group on the topics that I've suggested, we can begin to do more of that moving forward. So, I encourage you to all think about that. And at one of our January Board meetings, we'll start taking this up. Does that make sense to folks? And I encourage you, if you have any other ideas, to come forward and let me know. When we have our discussion in January, I hope that you all come with ideas about how we might pull together those work, those work groups. Consider people who want to be on those work groups and things of that sort. Now, I know there is an interest in some Board of Ed training and development and some of you have been on the Board a long time and some of you are newer and I think we probably need some refresher, refreshers and updates on the roles and responsibilities of a Board of Ed. So, unless anybody has great objections to that, I would like to move forward and start to figure out a way to schedule those sessions. I'm thinking as much as possible to work things into our Board meetings and/or set aside, you know, an evening where we spend two hours on some item in particular. But, you know, for example, we do have workshop meetings each month. We could incorporate some of the training into and development into those sessions perhaps. There has been some talk about having a retreat. I know scheduling Saturday things is very hard for some people on the Board, but I'll be talking to each of you and we'll figure out how we figure out a way to spend some time together in early 2019, talking about Board goals and things that we'd like to work on together for the coming year. Does that make sense to folks? Okay, so we'll be talking more about that. And without any further ado, we'll go on to Board of Education meeting minutes and we, I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 13th, 2019 meeting minutes and it has to be from somebody who was there. So, moved by Mark, seconded Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor? Yes, Tracy?
I'm sorry, I thought I had a correction, I don't, never mind. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the November 13th meeting minutes? Any abstentions?
Wasn't there.
Yes, great. How about you, Lisa?
I'm looking for them, I'm sorry. I recall going over them, they're fine.
You have to abstain because you weren't there.
I abstain.
It's okay.
I abstain. You have to abstain as well.
I wasn't there.
You weren't there. Did you read them? Did you read them?
Because I approved them.
You're the secretary, did you read them?
No, but I didn't see them. So, I mean, I wasn't there.
They were sent to me because he wasn't there.
Okay. So, now we're up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Oh, oh, here it is, okay. The first person up is Tyler Griffin, the new Chair of the Board of Finance. Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you, same to you and to the new Board members and to the existing Board members. I'm happy to be here. I just wanted to come down, this is your first meeting. As the Chair of the Board of Finance, I want to let everyone know that I am, I want to work with everybody here. I want to make sure we get budgets passed, first time go around. This is a tough year for all of us. I'm sorry it took three-budget votes, I don't want that to happen again. But my information is online, any of you, please, the new members, old members, please feel free to, whenever you want, reach out, contact me. We have had our first meeting and I have assigned some of my Board members to come to your committees as well and so a representative will come to the, try and make most Fiscal and School Planning and Design Committee meetings and then we'll try and rotate to the regular Board of Ed meetings as well, especially during budget season. I want this to be as open and transparent as you can and to speak to your point earlier, Madam Chairman, transparency and being open and getting the public involved is a big concern and I think that if we take the right steps, we can address that. One thing that I can suggest, and my Board has talked about it, is the reinvigoration of the Tri-Board. I think that would be a huge thing for this town to get members from each of the Boards together on a regular basis to talk about what's going on in town, so we can be on the same page with everything going forward. I think that'll help also with transparency and I think that will assist us, budget season comes around as well. So, good luck to new members, good luck to the existing members. I'll afford to working with all of you and I am excited for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Quick question, thank you. Have you scheduled your, can you share your regular monthly meeting date with us?
Absolutely. Third Wednesday of every month, so we'll have one next Wednesday, the 18th. Seven o'clock Town Hall, Bellingham Auditorium, hopefully. We were, we're either in the Bellingham or we actually got kicked out because the Police Department had a, had a big thing, so we were moved to the Probate Judge, but it's still on the second floor, so we'll be in Town Hall always.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next person up is Joanne Haddad.
Good evening. I too congratulate all of new Board members, existing Board members, new Executive Committee members and, boy, I'll tell you what, well, my name is Joanne Haddad, Wyndham resident, also Assistant Principal at Wyndham Center School. My pride grows and grows every time I come in this door. When I see Tyler Griffin, a former student of mine, sitting here at the table and now Board Chair for Finance, again, makes me very proud to continue to serve Wyndham. So, I come to you tonight as a, an Assistant Principal and I'm here on behalf of the administrative team at Wyndham Middle School because I wanted to just share some, some good news with you. After our attendance meeting last week, it came to light that we have approximately of 654 students, 160 students who have perfect attendance. That comes out to 24 percent. That may sound low to you, but it is not. It's a really good number, especially in light of the fact that, you know, absenteeism has been an issue and so we continue to focus on it. It's at the forefront of our agendas quite often on working on student attendance and avoiding chronic absenteeism. So, we're pretty proud of that. And as we approach the 90-day mark, which is in January, as you know, halfway through, right now it's around January 28th, depending on snow days, give or take. The administrative team is planning a 90-day mark celebration for those students and staff who have perfect attendance and, you know, maybe we'll extend it even to like one absence or two absences, but we think it's a really great trend that we're on and we just want to, you know, get that out there and continue making it known to the students so that they continue on this positive path. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody who didn't sign up? Okay, so now we're on to Dr. Youngberg for the Superintendent's Report.
Before we continue, we just worked even this and I don't know Lisa, but I walked out of the minutes or in any of the board information. So, can I talk to Chris to help me out here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. She didn't want me to, wait, she just wanted, okay.
I think you can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so your package, we have a lot of things to celebrate. I'm going to try to run through them quickly, just summarize them. I wish I could spend the time reading all the names of the students who are being recognized, but we'll do a quick summary and just explain how broad we are of them. So, first off, congratulations to all the students who made the National Junior Honor Society or who were inducted, I should say, into the National Junior Honor Society at Barrows. Congratulations to the middle school for receiving a grant that will help them with some STEM activities. Congratulations to the before and after-school students working at Sweeney. They raised some money for the Wyndham Area Interfaith Ministries, the Walk for Warmth. Congratulations to Alfonso Velazquez for being nominated All-American. He is one of 131 high school students who were nominated and he is going to be recognized at an All-State Award presentation in January. Congratulations to the 193 students who made Honorable or High Honor at Wyndham High School. Their names are included in your packet. We're also working on trying to figure out how to get their names publicized because that's definitely something we want everyone to know. 193 students, Honorable. Way to go, students and their parents, we're working hard at it as well.
And teachers.
And teachers, that's right, how could I forget them? Absolutely. Again, I just said, another congratulations to attendance in general across the district. As Ms. Haddad said, we are trending downward for the month of November compared to last year, so we're, we're working on getting the kids here and it's, it's working and you know you can't get to your academic goals if they're not in their seats, so we're happy about that. Congratulations to the Wyndham High School students who were inducted or named to the All Eastern Connecticut Conference Team for both, for all bi-soccer, football, volleyball, girls soccer, and cross-country. And a special congratulations to those students who were also named as ECC Scholar Athletes. It's one thing to be recognized for our work in the classroom, always, of course, our biggest focus, but to be recognized as an athlete and a scholar is even more impressive, so congratulations to all those students. Again, and congratulations to, I see Ms. Swart in the, in the audience for her nomination as, or receiving the 2019 Parent Involvement Award.
I think we should give her a hand and why don't you stand up and take it back?
She's comfortable sitting, right?
It's right there.
That's what it looks like. Congratulations or a thank you goes out to Ms. Tahaya at Natchog School. She started a science club for the 4th and 5th graders on Tuesday afternoons and is working on a math club as well, so we're getting our students engaged in after-school academics, which is a really neat thing. Congratulations to Amy Finsmith, she's the district's dual-language specialist and she is going to be speaking at a multi-state bilingual conference in Baxton, Mass. So, we're always proud of the work they do outside of the district. The Rotary Club has given our 3rd graders bright yellow dictionaries. They have a project known as Words for Thuds and we appreciate the Rotary Club's support. Congratulations or a shout-out goes out to the Department of Family and Community Partnerships for their work in receiving the 21st Century Grant. Very happy about that grant, nearly $300,000 to support our after-school, before and after-school programs, so very happy about that money coming in. And a couple of you were at the 38th, I guess, 38th iteration of the Sweeney Feast, so happy about that. We just want to shout out about that. And that's about it for celebrations, awards, and recognitions.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, well, it's always nice to hear good news and are there other things you'd want to keep walking us through then?
Okay, so in the packet you received all the names of the students who made High Honor Roll and Honor Roll and again, we'll be looking for ways to get that information out to the public. Next up on our, on the Superintendent's Report is the PSAT results and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weathers.
If he has a microphone.
Hello, oh, good. Good evening, so I'm scrolling down here to our, oh, there we go.
Just as a reminder to people who are listening or watching, Mr. Weathers is the new acting Assistant Superintendent.
Sorry about that, I should have introduced him.
Okay, so for the PSAT results, they just have come in for the district a few days ago. Students actually, our 9th grade and 10th grade and 11th grade students should be receiving them through College Board over, if they haven't already, they'll be receiving them likely today. They've been going out the last couple of days individually. But for our whole results for the group, just some interesting highlights. Notice, this is a little different than the SATs that they'll take in April where we have three days during the school week that we try to take them with two makeup dates. There's one day in October and that's it. So, but we had high participation this year, actually more than we've had in the last several Octobers doing this. So, Grade 11 students had a total scale score increase of about 13 points, which is actually a significant amount compared to previous years. There was actually a really marked increase in our math scale scores. And also we had a, it says decrease here, but we actually had a 2% increase in our ELA scores, our evidence-based reading and writing. And I know, I was just talking about that with one of the ELA teachers today, about that increase and we had a 2% decrease in math in terms of our proficiency meeting benchmark, but again, their actual, the average score of the average student has actually significantly increased, so we're hoping we can get that number by April or in March when we take the SATs. And overall, that's Grade 11. Grade 10 is running lower than it has the last couple of years and Grade 9 is running significantly higher. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Weathers?
So, the math score, the score went up, but the benchmark score went down?
So, yeah, so there's two measurements. There's your average scale score, which, so most people take the PSAT, there's a score between 200 to 800 and when students get results in math and EBRW, evidence-based reading and writing, you'll get a scale score. So, the average scale scores actually drives our accountability benchmarks in the district. The other measure that we're also more familiar with, but actually doesn't drive any of our accountability measures is the percent of students meeting the grade-level scores, which in, when they take it in March is a 540 in the mathematics for Grade 11 and a 480 in the evidence-based reading and writing. So, you can have a decrease in one and have an increase in the other and often with Sback and in our SATs, you see that quite frequently.
So, that happens because the data's skewed. You've got more students moving that are above the benchmark, moving higher. Well, students that are below the benchmark are not moving up?
Correct. Or you could have our extremes on the ends, right? Lower and higher performing students in the cohort.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is our students that do well are doing well and our students that are doing not so well are not really getting better.
Depending on the cohort of the three grades, yes. So, it depends which grade you're talking about, but in Grade 11, yes, that would, that could particularly be true, but it also could be depending, the one thing with the PSATs again, in terms of sample size. Not all of our students, if you don't show up that day, you don't take the test.
You did say that the participation was higher too.
It is high, right, and then compared to the past, it hasn't been as high, so we're comparing different sample sizes as well.
Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
So, if a student doesn't show up on that day, they can't take the test, they can't retake it either?
The PSAT is, in the high schools, very, there's a, they can take the PSAT but not at Wyndham High School for that day. It's very specific rules and we have to start at a certain time. When we do the SAT day, the official state test, we don't have to give the PSATs. Many high schools in the state, and I'm glad that Wyndham High School does, offers a PSAT in October. There's makeup days and the March SAT day, you have two makeup days.
I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mark?
The report has Grade 10 as lower scores in both math and EBRW with marked year-over-year decrease.
Yeah, so that means this lower scores are lower scale, Grade 10 was lower across the board in scale score and meeting benchmark, so both measurements were lower than it had been the previous years, like it's-
So, that is, that's the great, that's from their Grade 9 reports or this is from last year's Grade 10 report?
Yeah, compare, actually both. The Grade 9 students have shown a little bit of growth that it came into Grade 10, but compared to last year's Grade 10 students, they had lower scale scores and fewer, a lower percentage of students meeting the benchmark that's set for Grade 10.
And are we looking into why that happened?
We actually are aware of it and we're trying to increase their, they did grow from Grade 9. We are looking, the Grade 9 cohort flagged us because it was lower in Grade 9 as well, so we're highlighting and selecting students as part of our intervention efforts specifically to math and EBRW. We're aware of it. So, now that we're actually giving the PSAT in three grades, we didn't always do that, we're able to kind of track and strategically look what we're focusing on. And by the way, if they're higher performing, we're still focusing on improving it to be even higher.
Okay, so we'll look at these, this cohort, we'll get looked at again when they take it in Grade 11.
Yes, and actually now, just so you know, and which is neat that we- So when our students take the SAT in Grade 11, we offer the PSAT in the spring so we can see if they made any growth during the year as well. So it's actually very useful. The teachers seem to really appreciate it as well because they could target their instruction around it.
Okay, next...
Then see if there's any, if there, anything's bad for, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There are some more questions. Tracy?
We didn't do a retreat this year because there was some chaos going on, but historically when we've looked at data from year to year, it's gone up, down, up, down, up, down. I pointed that out at different retreats and board meetings. Are we seeing that continue throughout the whole district from whenever we start testing them in 3rd grade or 2nd grade, all the way through high school? Every other cohort seems to do better than the cohort previously or worse than the cohort previously. So I'm wondering if, we've been talking about this for 2 superintendents now and nothing seems to be changing, and I don't know if it's a natural progression. I've never compared it to other districts, whether they do this or not. May I finish?
Go ahead.
Or whether, whether we just continue to go on or whether there's something going on that makes this, this break every other year a part of our, our natural progression?
So, so, so in terms of SATs, it's a little trickier when you're measuring just the SAT because it's just Grade 11, right? So you, it's very easy to see like the, I call it like the wave, up and down sometimes depending. We've had, in some years, we've had a couple of increases back-to-back and sometimes you'll see in ELA, not in math, vice versa. And S-Back however, because we have grades 3 to 8, when we combine all the scores together over the past 5 years, what we have seen in the S-Back scores, which is encouraging to your point, is we've seen that with Connecticut, we've closed the gap by a third in ELA compared to 5 years ago, so we're trending up. And we did have a dip year a couple of years ago, but overall, we're trending, or this way. And then in mathematics, we've closed the gap about 1/4 of the state compared to 5 years ago. So when you look at it all that way, you start to see it, but within the grade levels, you will see some wave fluctuations based in cohorts, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Murphy?
I have the same thought that is Lambert. We've both been on the board 10 years. We've been watching this thing for 10 years and it does seem like there's this inexplicable ripple. The average may be going up, the trend line may be going up, but it seems from year over year, it seems it's up and down and up and down and up and down. And I'm kind of wondering what causes that because it does seem peculiar.
So you're speaking specifically about S-Back data?
No, I'm talking about, it doesn't matter which data we've looked at. It was doing it in the CMATS, it was doing it in every bit of data that we've looked at. We get a class that's doing well and the class behind it doesn't do so well, the class behind that does well, the class behind that does...
Check it out.
It's up and down and up and down and up and down. And it seems to be something that we haven't really figured out that's going on there.
Before I go get to you, Katina, is there anything response that Mr. Weathers or Dr. Youngberg would like to make on that?
We can look...
We can also talk more about it and after you get a chance to look more at this.
We can look more detailed. I know, actually, I remember this comment at a retreat once before. There is sometimes within a grade, you will see fluctuations and part of the, you'll see that up and down is because each cohort of students are different students, so their starting points could be different. And then with some, you'll see greater amounts of growth within a couple of years. That's why when you start to look at all the grades, like with S-Back at least, with all the grades at once, you can see some more general movement when you're looking at larger sample sizes of data. And again, over 5 years versus like when you're looking year to year, sometimes you will see some dips and peaks.
Is the S-Back's...
Katina, you need to use your microphone.
Yeah, you need to talk into your mic.
Thank you.
Hold it closer to you.
You gotta get used to it, that's all.
It's all new. Thank you. So is the, how can I face you if I'm doing this? So is the S-Back enough practice in 8th grade for the students to perform in 9th grade taking the PSAT? Are they similar in composition or how they are?
There are different assessments. Some of the topics obviously are very similar in the overlap and so, but they are different assessments, but so what we start to do is since the official test really in high school is the SAT, that's why now we start switching. So after 8th grade, we give the PSAT in Grade 9 and 10 and then 11 and we do it both in fall and spring. But the, in Grade 8, S-Back topics are similar to what they'll see in Grade 9 and actually if students are taking algebra, for example, in Grade 8, they're already taking some of that material in the curriculum, will be covered obviously on the PSAT. But they are different assessments and their format structure and how they're presented are different.
And so I'm thinking maybe the 8th graders need to have quasi-PSAT because if the format and the structure are different when they are presented as 9th graders who are like overwhelmed with high school and everything else, that might be an opportunity for them not to do so well because it's totally new. So as a system, can we do anything to have them practice ahead of time, taking a similar test with structure that is similar?
So...
See what I'm saying?
They, I do. They actually do have a PSAT 8, which we used to administer several years ago, and one of the reasons, just so you know, one of the decisions to remove that was because at the time, the Grade 8 students who were also getting ready for all their stuff had the science assessment and the S-Back and they had a lot, for lack of a better word, assessment saturation. So it's, but yes, that's definitely something to consider.
One more comment if I may?
Yes.
So we see the going down and up as it happens, but do we follow, and I know we follow each student individually, right?
Yes.
Does the board ever gets an account, a number of the students, a number of, the specific number of students that stayed the same or improved through the time? Not the general score, but like so many students did the same?
Yes, we...
There's an answer to that.
We absolutely can get you any piece of data that you're looking...
Yeah, we can provide you that.
We do a really good job of benchmarking and tracking student progress, so we can get you whatever you're looking for. Normally in board meetings, we are giving you that information.
Great.
So you'll get it, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I see Dr. Youngberg's made notes. I'm going, I made a note on follow-up and I think that there's a fair amount of interest in this topic and we should figure out a way to dig a little deeper into it at one of our future meetings. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll work together to figure out how we want to do that.
Can I respond to something?
Yes, sure.
I know that getting them in the testing as soon as we can and all that is very important, but what Dr. Weathers says is something that Dr. Sewell and I and other people who have been on this board for a long period of time have been really concerned about is test saturation for these students. A few years ago, they had 4 or 5 different tests and we were transitioning out of S-Back or out of CMTs and into S-Back and then PSATs. And they were taking so many tests, the students were finally just like filling in whatever bubble or just putting their heads down and refusing to participate because they had been so over-tested. So I think that was part of the decision, not to start too young when they're still taking the S-Backs, to give them the PSATs. And the PSATs don't count towards anything in their 9th grade. It doesn't affect grading or class rank or where they stand. I don't, we don't even report them to the state, do we?
No, it's all intern, right.
Yeah, the PSATs in 8th and 9th grade, we don't even report to the state. They're just for our own internal data. So I think adding too soon another test and another, you know, measurement that isn't necessary, isn't required by the state tied to funding or grants or something like that, I think in my opinion, I'm just one board member, is kind of unneeded.
Okay, thank you.
And so I would like, you know, we can, we can discuss all this more, but we have the speaker waiting to talk to us tonight and I want to keep moving through the superintendent's report.
Okay.
And at the end of the superintendent's report, I'd like to entertain a motion to move Item 8.1 up on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so that we can get you on before more stuff. Okay.
Okay, the Department of Family Engagement and Community Partnerships would like to invite all the board members to the Three Kings Day Celebration on Saturday, January 11th, between 11:00 and 2:00 PM. So please join us. Last year, more than 600 people came and we'd love to see you there. January 6th for the staff members in Wyndham is a professional development day from 8:30 to 3:15. I believe we're going to be using the middle school and there'll be a number of offerings Mr. Weathers and I are presenting. In addition to a number of our staff members, our ESOL teachers are actually presenting guided language acquisition design strategies to the rest of the staff that's there, so we're looking forward to January 6th. In your packet was a proposed calendar, budget calendar. I shared it last night at Finance and Audit. I think we can make the dates happen and meet the deadlines as they are proposed, but I'd love feedback if you think there's anything else that we need to add. We did lose some time with the transition, but we're going to do the best we can to meet those deadlines, so.
Did people have a chance to look at this calendar?
Yes.
Were there any suggestions made at the Finance and Audit Committee last night? Do people have any feedback tonight on this? Not to put anybody on the spot.
Dr. Youngberg, no process had taken place prior to the transition? Okay, thank you.
Right, so not only do we have a, have an intense budget calendar that we have to stick to, and for the newer board members, it is related to the town charter. There's absolutely no flexibility on the final date in mid-March that we have to get the budget to the Board of Finance. It may mean, I just want to, I want people to put these dates on their calendar now so we don't get to February and people say, "Oh, I didn't know we had to be doing this then" or whatever. And it may mean that we have to schedule a special meeting or 2, 2, depending on how we're doing on all of this, to work through some things because it's, those of you who are around on the board last year know that that board asked for a budget book that looks like the budget book that the Board of Finance and the Town Council and the Willmanic Service District, I mean Taxing District get, that is very much more detailed than we're used to, which is going to be a lot of work for everybody and...
We plan on doing it though.
The staff is, the staff is going to need our support.
Smile Rita, it's okay.
And, but, but I think it's going to give us more information and we're going to, we're going to need to take the time to unpack everything and go into presenting our budget to the Town, Board of Finance, in a much more unified way as a board. So just be forewarned, it's going to be some work, so.
Agreed.
Yep, Murf?
The other thing is remembering from 2 years ago that the March 13th deadline is cast in, cast in the charter, so it's kind of cast in stone, but the weather doesn't always want to cooperate.
Right, right.
So you don't really want to get yourself in a position where you're not done until March 12th because if it snows on March 13th, you're stuck. You need to, you need, you know, at least the weather gassers give us a couple of days warning when there's a snowstorm and you may find that you have to schedule a special meeting on the 11th or 12th in order to get the budget done and avoid being snowed out on the 13th.
The 13th gives us 2 days though. The deadline is actually March 15th, so.
Yes.
So, yeah.
In the charter, but 13th is a Wednesday, right?
We'll figure it out.
It's actually a Friday.
It's just that given, given the weather and we did get, we did get caught in it 2 years ago, so.
13th is a Friday, so we actually do need to get it done.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next piece of my report is Personnel Report that I'm going to hand over to Ms. Garrett. Does she have a, or if they have any questions? Maybe they don't have questions, but there's a Personnel Report in your packet. If you've had a chance to look at it, bless you.
Yes.
I don't know if they had a chance to read it.
If people have any questions on the Personnel Report, you can always talk to, yes.
Just one thing, can we put if they're replacements or new positions? I think this, this new report is fabulous. I loved looking at it, I love knowing, but sometimes if someone resigns and we don't appoint them for a couple of months, we can't see the direct person they might be replacing. Salary's great from a budget point of view and stuff, but just, you know, if you hired a new 3rd grade teacher to replace a 3rd grade teacher, just put replacement on the bottom or replacement for retirement or something like that, so that way we know that's why the position's being filled. It's not a new position. Does that make sense?
Yes. Got it, okay.
Okay. Yes, Mark?
It also makes sense to me if the resignations, I see resignations for personal reasons, but it doesn't tell me from what they're resigning. We don't have a position or a school, so if I don't know all of the staff personally, I don't know where Jeanette or Jose or Marta resigned from.
Okay, we'll add it.
Thank you.
Want to know the position?
Yes.
But I like this format much better than the previous format.
It's very informative, thank you.
Okay, we can move on and get to the first reading of Policy 3323. The policy hasn't changed, but this is the, this is the procurement policy that what we have done based on the auditor's recommendations is added sort of a clause or a code of ethics at the beginning of the policy, so we have an opportunity to do the first reading tonight about whether or not that code of ethics works for the board to go along with what we already had for 3323.
Can we move that down to discussion, a discussion item?
Sure.
If people want to discuss it? We'll amend the agenda when we get there. Is there anything you want to say about your priorities in the report?
Oh, I was trying to, I was trying to save time because I figured they had a chance to read it, but I, I am working really hard to get to know at a deep level the leaders on my team and let the staff get to know who I am in terms of my leadership style and just working to sort of develop a sense of collaboration and trust and transparency. So I have included some notes in the packet about the things that we're doing to get, to make people feel empowered and engaged in the work that we're doing. It's, you know, teaching is not an easy job. Teaching in a setting like Wyndham is not easy. We're a small town with urban issues, so our teachers, our staff members are working really hard. We've had some issues pop up at our middle school and at North Wyndham Elementary School and I know everyone's aware of them. If you haven't heard about them from, from the community, you've seen them on social media, but I can assure you that we're working really hard with both the leadership teams at both of those schools and the staff members. In fact, Mr. Weathers and I had an opportunity yesterday to start a process. We had a couple of snow days in there, have, we're not as far along in the process as we had hoped, but we're working closely with the teachers at North Wyndham Elementary School to sort of do a reset for students around rituals and routines and expectations and what classroom environment should look like, sound like, and feel like, so that every learner in the, in the space is able to do the best they can. So we're working on that and we're working on trying to make sure all the leaders in the building are empowered to get the job done. So I think you're going to see some positive things happening. It's, it's not easy work and it's not something that you're going to instantly see. You don't reset expectations and you don't build trust with human beings. It doesn't happen overnight, so I just want everyone to know, I think you're going to see some wonderful things happening. We just need a little bit of time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your work and the rest of the team.
Yes, go team.
So are there any questions, comments?
I have a comment I liked very much so on your statement, the four gifts of leadership that you mentioned, love, significance, authorship, and power. Thank you for doing that for our schools.
You're welcome. That's a great book. I'll talk to you about it later, but I didn't, I wish I made those up, but it's an awesome book I can recommend for you. You'd love it.
Okay, so what I would like to do is entertain a motion to move up Item 8.1 on the agenda before committee reports.
So moved.
So moved by Tracy, second by Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So the next item on the agenda will be update on the high school renovation project and we have Mr. Callahan here with us. Thank you for waiting patiently. You might introduce yourself for the audience.
And the new members.
And the new members, yeah.
My name is Mike Callahan. I'm the chairman of the Wyndham High School Renovation Committee. So I, before I start, I'm going to try very hard to keep my comments brief, but the members in the building committee that are here tonight will tell you that's probably not going to happen.
Well, we did get a written report in our packets too.
And that, that's actually my, my question. but the members in the Building Committee that are here tonight will tell you that's probably not going to happen.
Well, we did get a written report in our packets, too.
And that, that's actually my, my question. I had sent Lynn, the, the chairperson, a brief status after our meeting with the state, and Lynn, I wasn't aware or know if that was handed out to the, to the board members.
It's in the packet, yeah.
Okay, excellent. So, I, I won't, I, I won't really reiterate what was in that report, but I do just have maybe two comments, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions, because I, I'm assuming that there, there possibly could be. My first comment is, the Building Committee has set a number of very specific tasks for itself over the next six to eight months, and I wanted to reassure the board that our first task is to work with the new superintendent, getting her up to speed, providing her an opportunity to look at the ed spec, the plans, the program, get to meet the design and construction team. We are, and I have to say, Dr. Youngberg, it's been a pleasure in the few meetings that we've had, I've been very, very encouraged and feel very excited about the progress that I expect us to make. So we, we wanted to give the superintendent a little bit of time to, you know, have her wrap her head not only around her new assignments on the teaching and education side, but on the building side. And we will work very diligently not to overwhelm the superintendent. And again, Dr. Youngberg, I, I'd like to reiterate, we will not ask you to do more than you're able to do, because we understand your primary mission is the education of the kids. So again, I just wanted the, the Board of Ed to know that we will work very carefully to continue to work with the board and the superintendent. I put forward that summary report, because I know the public in general is very anxious. The Building Committee's been, you know, somewhat quiet in terms of reaching out to the public. I feel like we're ready to change that, and this meeting is our first real effort. We're expecting to meet with the Town Council in the next week or two, and again, to answer questions. And then once Dr. Youngberg has an opportunity to either give us some additional feedback or more or less a nod that things are okay, and if the Board of Education is okay where we are, then we're going to turn loose the design team and really run like heck to try to make a, make up some of the lost time in the schedule. So we've had, I thought, a very good meeting with the State of Connecticut. A couple of representatives from the State of Connecticut came out and visited the school. The day after that visit, the design team met with the state again to work through the plans and specifications, budget, ed spec. We did get some feedback, there is some indication they want to, you know, make some adjustments, which I personally feel are appropriate. We will work diligently to make sure it doesn't become their program, it stays our program. My biggest takeaway from the meetings we've had with the state, and I think Tracy can add to this, is the message is clear that they are very interested in working with us. So I, I think it was the, the bit of delay that we had, it was worth it for them to, for us to work through the plan and the ed spec, to have something that was comprehensive, representative of the needs of the community, and to spend that time getting them up to speed. So even though we lost a little bit of time, I think it was worth it, because I feel the state is really much more, has a much better understanding of what we're trying to do. And I say that because I'm pretty confident they're going to support the, the higher original referendum amount. And that's a good thing, because essentially the plan that we have, I'm very confident represent what needs to be done in the building for a renovate-like new school. And of course, we're going to continue to work hard to control the cost and to ensure we include all the elements in the project, but we, we still have some work to do. The other thing I want to make clear, that is, the chairman of the Building Committee, I will make sure the Building Committee continues to work closely with the town. I've met just this week with the town manager to talk about short-term financing until we start to get money, you know, from the reimbursement from the state. I've talked to the town manager about making sure it's clear what the impacts of the school will have on the mill rate and the taxpayers. And we, we are now just beginning to have a good understanding of that process. So I will commit to you to work diligently with the town, you know, Town Council, the Board of Ed, and the town staff to make sure that, you know, we've got all of our, you know, the procedures and steps in line, that we're clear about what the costs are and what the reimbursement's going to be. So those are my two really broad comments, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding cost, schedule, or otherwise.
I want to open it up to the two members of the board that are on the Building Committee, if there's anything that the two of you would like to add?
No, I'm good. I, I think Mr. Callahan has handled it well, and he knows what's going on, he has a good grasp of everything.
Are people, are people, after reading the memo, or maybe you didn't get a chance, maybe we all didn't get a chance to read the memo, but I know there's been some reporting in the, in the local media about this also. There is a new timeline. Could you really quickly synopsize that timeline for the board members and also for the public that's watching this?
Happy to. So before I do that, maybe if, if folks didn't have a chance to, to read, I will summarize that the, the plan that was submitted to the state and the plan that the Building Committee is working aligns with the referendum requirements in that it includes the three program elements that were in the referendum, the high school renovation, the early childhood center, and the administrative offices. So those elements of the program are intact. The plans and the program that the architect has put together aligns pretty well with the ed spec. So I think at this stage, the Building Committee is on target to satisfy the, the board's, you know, overall objectives as defined in the ed spec. The, the reason we're a bit behind, there's two reasons, and I, I want to be fair. Some of it is the Building Committee's taken longer than we would have liked to, to get to where we could meet with the state. The other part of the delay is because the state has asked us to update our application with the new higher amount, and it, it takes them on their end to make sure it's appropriate, it gets in, into the legislative agenda, and they will act on it at a later date as opposed to the date that was initially anticipated. So those are the reasons, but right now, we expect it'll take another 12, if we're, if we're careful, or 15 months before we're ready to go, go to bid. So, you know, we are anticipating to bid the project spring of 2021. And then construction would start in the summer of 2021, and we would hope to be finished by the fall of 2023.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Yes, hi me.
I know that, you know, you mentioned that there was no commitment from the state regarding contributions, but do you have any idea what you can convince the state to put in? Because in previous, when we first, when we first, the 112 million were approved, I mean, we thought that we had like a 70% contribution for the state. All of this changed with the new, but do you have any things or any, you know?
Again, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a very highly qualified answer that I will deny I ever said, but...
On tape.
On tape.
Darn it. All kidding aside, it really is my belief that the state will do what they can to maximize our reimbursement. And again, I'm hesitant to talk about percentage, but if you recall, when we were negotiating with the state during the referendum phase, they had said they would, they would do what is called a space waiver, and they, that would allow us to get the maximum reimbursement. They were also looking at the number of students and a number of other factors. I believe it's, it's likely we will get between 70 and 80%, a commitment of 70 to 80%, hopefully, you know, on the higher side. But it's, it's absolutely essential that everybody remembers, when the state talks about reimbursement, that's for eligible items. And there's going to be a number of ineligible items in this project, and one of them, at least initially, would have been the pool. The pool would have been ineligible, so whatever money that would have been spent on the pool, we wouldn't have gotten any reimbursement. So any ineligible item goes to knock that maximum reimbursement rate down. And again, we have directed our design team to work diligently to identify things that might be ineligible and if, and, and either not include them, or at least to track them, so we have an idea. And again, as we get further and further into this, we will work very hard to develop an understanding of what impacts it'll have. And again, the state's been very good, they're, they've offered, and we're certainly going to meet with them at every opportune time when we get a better handle on what the costs are, how many rooms there are, and things like that. We'll go back and, again, we will prod them for some sense of what that reimbursement is. I guess one other thing I should say relative to that. The state was very clear that they had a couple of concerns about the number of students that we are carrying in our student projections, and we've asked our consultant to upgrade, update the student projections, and, and there's a little bit of a... And I don't think it's going to be a problem, but they've asked us to at least think about what impact it might have on the population here at the high school if Wyndham Tech gets relocated. The, the state has a plan, they're working on a plan to relocate Wyndham Tech, and the, the folks at the state said, "Well, you know, if we relocate out of Wyndham, some Wyndham kids may not want to go to the new location, and what impact might that have?" They want to make sure we at least are thinking about that and can accommodate any kids that might, any additional kids who might have gone to Wyndham Tech would come here. And it was kind of a wink and a nod, the impression I got was they were asking us to do that because it would help them justify a higher reimbursement. So, you know, again, we're, we're working and we'll continue to work hard to maximize that.
Do we have any, are there projections yet on how many students that might be?
I know there's 225 students from Wyndham that go to Wyndham Tech now. I don't know if we know how many of those will potentially return, but 225 is a big number, given that we have 600 here.
Right.
I don't think it would be them all.
Right.
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn, I think, I think it was a legitimate question, and I think more than anything, it wasn't that the state wanted us to pin down even a range of numbers, they just wanted to make sure it was on our radar screen.
We're counting for it, right.
Yeah, yeah, and, and again, we'll work, we, we surprised the superintendent a little bit, because we did ask her, "Well, how many kids might come?" And I think her answer was spot on, she's like, "Well, how, how would I know?" So we'll, we'll work, we have a, you know, a student projection, we just authorized some additional money for him to take that into consideration. So we'll do what we can to get a handle on it, but, and again, I think, at least me personally, what, what I will work toward is that we have flexibility in terms of the classrooms, how they're structured. There's some flexibility in, you know, we're not going to use up every single classroom, we've got to build flexibility into the schedule, the classrooms. And again, that's been one of our Building Committee's objectives, is, you know, if we design this building to be occupied in 2023, guaranteed in 2024, there's going to be something different, and we have to make sure that difference doesn't tip us over, that there's flexibility in the floor plan to accommodate increased enrollment. You know, I mean, maybe, you know, I mean, the impact of the kids coming in from Puerto Rico after the hurricane, I mean, who could have predicted that? We could think about it now and maybe even plan for that, but there, there could be other, you know, I mean, the economy could change, we could have, you know, folks leaving town, folks coming into town. Economy could get really strong, and the, the new employees at Electric Boat may start to find housing attractive here in town, and we may see an increase. We can't speculate, we just don't know, so.
Every school system deals with that.
Right, yeah, it's difficult.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Murph?
I did notice that your environmental paragraph doesn't mention air conditioning at all.
Yes, it does.
I can answer the question, Murphy.
Well, it says air conditioning, state of the art.
It's what is included.
Now, is that going to cover the whole building?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess my concern at this point is Killingley High School, Talon High School, E.O. Smith, we want a building that's at least comparable to the schools that are around, at, at least initially, because we're probably going to have to live with this building for 40 years, and we don't want to, to go to all of this trouble and then not build a high school that's at least the equivalent of what other towns have, are offering to students. And if we do, it's what I call the Barrows Effect. When we open Barrows, all of a sudden we have a building that everyone wants to go to. The last time I saw a number, there were 400 students from Wyndham who are eligible to go to Wyndham High School, who are not going to Wyndham High School. Now, 225 of them may be at Wyndham Tech, but there's another 100 or 100 and some that are at places like E.O. Smith and Magnet Schools here and there, and, and and some fraction of those students, whether Wyndham Tech moves or not, will come to a better facility than what we, we're offering right now. And so if we meet the Killingley High School-type building standard, I wouldn't be surprised if we get another 100 students.
Yeah, I, I agree, and again, I'll let Mary and Tracy, it's, it's my outlook that it's a consensus of the Building Committee that air conditioning is a priority for us.
With global warming, you know, I don't think we can ignore that.
Well, just the fact we have summer school and other, we could do summer school for multi-scholes between here and Barrows. You know, maybe we do middle school and high school here at the high school, and elementaries at Barrows, because those are our two air-conditioned buildings. Our students don't learn well when they're drowsy and over-warm, and there's a certain upper level that we then have to either cancel school or let students out early, and that will help alleviate that and give our children, the ones that need the support in the summer, the best educational opportunities they can have in the summer. I don't think that the Building Committee, for myself and I think for Mary, we've kind of made that a hard no, that we, you know, hold on to air conditioning until we absolutely cannot afford it, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Mark?
The question I have, and I, I don't expect an answer tonight, is the long-term effect of keeping our preschool at middle school now until 2023? Has the staff taken that into consideration, or how? I, I'd like to hear how, how we're going to react to that, and I don't expect you to come up with a detailing of tonight, but we're obviously now going to extend their stay many years.
Okay, so let's put that on, on an agenda for a follow-up report and discussion, okay?
I talked to Dr. Youngberg the other day, and we talked about the schedule needing to change because the state's requiring more credits for graduation, so we have to make sure we have either enough classrooms to accommodate all of those students or possibly move to an eight-period day or a block schedule or something like that, to be able to make sure that our students can get all the credits in in the four years. We also talked about having to find space for swing space, both in the committee, and Dr. Youngberg and I have discussed that, and that, you know, that's going to be a concern coming up.
Anything else? Appreciate you taking the time to come in and, and speak with us this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all your work, I know it's, it's not a paid position.
No, no, and I'm happy to do it, I'm, I'm very excited. We have a very good Building Committee, I look forward to working with the Board of Ed as the communities, I'm hoping, will be very happy with the outcomes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're on to committee reports, and we're, we're, I don't know which, the former chair of, of, of the Finance and Audit Committee or the current one should do the report.
I think we should let Murph do his final report.
Okay, great. Okay, Murph, we'll let you kick it off, and then Mark may have something to add.
The Finance and Audit Committee met last night, and Mr. Doyle and I were both there, so I forget something, he was there, too. We have, we have, we, we have some transfer requests that are on the, on the action report that we'll look at later. We, we've spent probably most of our, well, Ms. Youngberg, Superintendent Youngberg presented a list of ways that she could affect savings, adding up to net of around $800,000 if we can actually really find all of that money, but it looks like that we can get some reductions in our costs. The question is whether or not we can get enough reductions in our costs to get down to the MVR, and we have not completely resolved that yet, in part because we're not completely sure how many encumbrances need to, to budget, you know, things we need to spend for the remaining school year. Much of the, much of the expenses have already been encumbered. We know how much we're going to pay staff through the end, or teachers through the end of June, for example, but not everything else. We, we have not yet received all of the grants that we're entitled to receive. The history is that we don't always get all of the money that we expect to get, and so you don't actually really count the grant money until you get the grant money, because things happen, you know, the state occasionally declares a rescission and doesn't give us everything that, that they intended to give us, or something happened. happens. So the budget is very, very tight at this point. And we knew going in, based on the forensic analysis, that the budget that was prepared last March was not entirely compatible with generally accepted accounting principles. And the superintendent has been discovering expenditure items that exist, but there's no budget for them. That is, we have commitments to spend money, we don't have a budget item to, to account for it. So those things, if we're going to do it, have to be added to the budget. So while she's busy trying to find things that she can reduce the budget, we're also, you're also discovering things that have to be added back into the budget. So I think, the, the hope is that you're going to get a net result on this at the January, the next meeting, which is January 8th. By that time, we should have a better handle on, we should actually have received the grant money that we're expecting to receive.
Or know when we're getting it received.
Or, yeah. Well, we should be able to figure out how much of it we can count, you know? And, and we should also have a better grip on, on what encumbrances. I mean, there are things that will, you never can tell when a special ed student will show up that will throw your special ed budget off from what you expected. There are, there are things that occur that you couldn't have predicted. That's, that's the nature of trying to forecast. But basically, the budget is very, very tight and, and we have not yet arrived at a budget that we can put up on the website that says, this is how we're going to get down to the MBR. And we're not there yet. And the other thing that we've been discussing, which Dr. Youngberg has already covered, is the, the proposed calendar for putting together the 2021 budget. So I commend the staff for the challenge of trying to get the 1920 budget in order and build the 2021 budget in order simultaneously. It's a, it's, it's a real challenge. And the, our finance department is down a person. And one of the ways that we're going to save some money is by reallocating some positions in that department and redefining a couple of jobs. But the department is not fully staffed at this point, which is even more of a challenge. So, and like the, Rita and the rest of the staff for the-
That's exactly what I was going to say.
For the work that they're doing, because they're really taking on a tough job.
Yeah. The, the whole cabinet, Rita especially, because obviously she's the, the finance person, but the whole cabinet has been going through the budget process with us. And they've just been wonderful. It is a lot of hard work and it takes a lot of time, but we're doing it together. So I do, I do really appreciate them. But Dr. Sewell, can I just ask, you had said January 8th. I thought we had said the information you were looking for, you could wait to the second January meeting?
Yes, I think we did say that, yes.
Okay, just checking. So it's still the 22nd?
We may know more by January 8th, but we're not really going to be able to finalize things till the second meeting, you're saying?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, my take on, on, on that was that if some hard decisions have to be made, the January 22nd meeting is when you're going to have to make. The, the problem is the longer you take to, to make decisions, if you have to make some serious cuts to programming, the longer you take to do that, the more you have to, the more-
Right.
A year has been passed and so the more you've spent, so the bigger the hit you have to take in the remaining part of the year. So it's, it's important that we figure out what we have to do and get it done as quickly as possible.
I think we should just make sure the board is, not intending to inflame any, any situation, but I think the board needs to be aware that the cuts we're looking at may indeed also include staff positions, that, that may, we may have exhausted our soft supplies and whatnot, that there's, they may have to start looking at potential staff cuts as well. So that's something that's on the horizon, that we may actually take that. So you're not surprised come January if that's what comes up. Nothing's been planned, nothing's been decided, nothing's been mentioned, but it's something the board should be aware of.
Doing everything we can to avoid it.
Yes.
Can I ask, is that for this, this current year?
It's to get through, because we have, we're almost halfway through the year and we have to get down to MBR. And, you know, going into the budget with obligations that we already had on the books and not, not really anticipating that we'd be, you know, we started out without a budget for a long time and had to operate as if we were under last year's budget, but now we're operating under less than last year's budget. So it's, the numbers don't add up.
No, we're currently projecting a $775,000 deficit if we run, if we don't do anything between now and June. So we have to make that up and get down to the MBR. So it's, it could be that, could be, it's going to be some hard cuts, there's no doubt about it.
And I don't think we can operate under the assumption that we get to the end of the year and we're in trouble and we'll go to the Board of Finance in the town and say, we want to ask you for $450,000 or $500,000 of undesignated fund balance money to help us make, make up that shortfall. It's been made pretty clear that, that, that option is not really going to be there. Because they've spent down their undesignated fund balance to a place where they don't want to keep digging into it.
And probably you, you know, all of you, but I, I don't, about positions that are vacant and that will not be filled out and how, how is that playing out? And maybe it's a topic for another discussion, but-
Would you like a report of what, of all the positions that are currently vacant or not being filled or?
Yes.
All of the above?
All the above, so that we can, you know, think of that before cutting people.
Of course.
That, that really was most of the list that Dr. Youngberg gave us last night. It still doesn't get there.
I think it's not only important for the board to know, but it's important for the people who vote for our education budget to know that while it doesn't seem like hard cuts are being made, cuts are being made all over the place and vacancies simply not filled. So we're not removing employees, but we're not giving those services, whether they're pares or tutors or speech therapists or, or physical therapists or school nurses or whatever it is, that positions that, I don't think we're without school nurses, but I don't want to put that rumor out there. We have school nurses. But like, whatever positions aren't, you know, being filled if their vacancy has come about, that we don't, we're not filling them, that's a service that's not being provided to our students.
Absolutely.
You know, you know, people say it's just a para, but pares provide vital students for our-
Absolutely.
Services for our teachers and our students and support services that are needed in so many of our classrooms where there are, are, are special ed students or, you know, other students with issues or just teacher support. So those positions being cut are really, or not filled are really cuts to-
Absolutely.
Our services being offered.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Is there any way, I know we have to make cuts and cuts have to be made, but do they have to come directly from the classroom and-
No, they don't.
I mean, can't we do it like at the top? I mean, if it has to be done from the administrative level as opposed to directly from the classroom?
Yeah, we try to do everything not to impact the students, absolutely.
Okay.
You'd be surprised how little you can actually save cutting administrators in, in terms of, because most of our expenses are classroom-level expenses. It's 70% of the budget. And we've already got a lot of people who are being pulled out of the jobs they're supposed to do to go fill holes in jobs that are, as you say, when you don't hire people and then somebody goes out sick, they get covered by someone else who's not doing the job they're supposed to be doing, but is being said, okay, can you stop what you're doing and come fill this for the day? So we've got teachers playing basically musical, and, and staff members playing musical chairs as it is in order to keep things going. So you, you've really got the rubber band pulled as tight as it's going to get pulled. And it's not like administration doesn't do things.
And I understand, I understand that.
That if you cut administration, it's going to cost you down the road there too. So we've got, well, we've got Mr. Weathers and, and Dr. Youngberg doing the job of three people. So it's, administration's already taken cuts. And, and if you look at the number of administrators that were in the district five years ago, the number of administrators that are here now, there've been substantial reductions. I forget what the number is, but it's, it's seven or eight people.
I think moving forward as we're going into the next budget, I think what we need to do is be really clear when we're going before the Board of Finance and the, and the general public about what the MBR budget that we're dealing with now has done to the district. You know, we don't want to point, we don't want to just say bad news. We want to laud the, the, the staff and the teachers and the administrators that are doing their best with the resources that they have. But we want to, like, I think be able to tell a story going into the next budget season about the lack of sustainability of an MBR budget. And I think we should all start getting pretty creative, thinking creatively about how we can tell that story. And who can help tell us, tell that story? So that, you know, it with the media and with the boards and with the voters, they're hearing real concrete examples with, with faces to those examples, if at all possible, or at least schools or what a classroom looks like without the resources it needs. I think that that's really important. And we're going to have to engage a lot more people than the Board of Ed and the administration in telling that story. So just, I urge people to think about that.
Yes.
I think based on conversa, I was up at Town Hall on the night of the referendum, sort of standing around after, after it passed, thank heavens. And I can't tell you how many people walked up to me and said, and I, it was hard to restrain myself because it's hard to have people who didn't give you the money that you needed, tell you that they really understand how tough it is for us that we have an MBR budget. So I think we, we have a, we have a big road ahead of us in the coming months to figure out a way to use this information in a constructive way. So everybody who's listening to this, if you have ideas, let us know. So the Finance Committee is meeting again. Do we know when? We have the schedule for next year set. It's, it's on the, it's website probably, right? Yeah.
I think we got it last time, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We passed it last time, but I don't know whether it's updated on the, on the website, but people can check it out. Anything else?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, school planning and design. Tracy?
Hi, we met last Thursday. Katina came to her first committee meeting. I don't know if it was the first meeting ever, but our first committee meeting. Dr. Youngberg and myself, Dawn Tomakis and Mary was there. And we had, and Roger Nato, when Tyler came and spoke, he's no longer, because he's the Chair of the Board, the Board of Finance, he's no longer the liaison. So he asked Roger Nato, who has a background in construction and has some ideas and participated in the conversation, which was nice. A reason we have a member of the Board of Finance is to be able to go back and say, we know these things are happening and, you know, kind of keep his board appraised of what's going on as well. And I very much appreciate that. I think I jinxed us a little bit because we had building updates. Tracy and Dawn are laughing right now, but we had building updates and things are going well, a few things.
Yeah.
Sweeney had no heat in the gym, blah, blah, blah. Roofs are good, knock on wood. We all kind of smiled, turned around, the whole nine yards. And now the North Wyndham roof is leaking considerably after the last few days of rain that we've had. So that's an issue. I do have a call in to Mr. Rivers to have a conversation with him about some of the issues that were in capital improvement that we need to start moving on. And that was one of our, our discussions. I went, I got that email from Dr. Youngberg saying that the roofs were leaking.
No, we just talked about this.
Yes, badly. And that was both North Wyndham and Wyndham Center schools were in our capital improvement. So hopefully we can get moving on getting those replaced. It probably won't happen this summer because the wheels of these things turn slowly, but hopefully by the following summer, John's making faces. Oh, maybe this summer then. We'll see what we can do.
Yes.
We'll have some conversations.
It's already too late.
But, but yeah, so there was conversations on that. Sweeney temporarily didn't have heat in the gym, little things that we talked about going on in the, in the buildings. And then oil tank removals, those are also conversations that we're going to have to have with the town. The high school renovation, we went on through an update. Dr. Youngberg talked a little bit about taking a good look at the ed specs and, and seeing where things lie, especially in light of the fact that, that state has kind of said that Tech will most likely be moving to Mansfield. And some of the things that we had when we were in that conversation with, with the state was that while some of our students will move with Tech, some who don't have parents who can pick them up after school or, you know, at different activities will be either removed from participating in sports and extracurriculars or they'll come back to Wyndham because their family is here and they can get rides home and transportation and stuff like that. So those were all conversations we had. And we talked about the capital improvement and the North Wyndham portable, where the Save the Music program is kind of centrally housed, although all the schools have, are participating in it, has a very spongy floor and some replacements and renovations are needed to be done in there, which was in last year's capital improvement. So we have to follow up on that. Middle school bathrooms, the sinks are, are working, but are not in an ideal situation. And one of our trucks is costing more to repair and, and fix up than, than a new one might cost. And, and those are other conversations that need to be had. So we had, I think, a, a good discussion on all of those topics. Everyone participated. I hope everyone felt welcomed and, you know, and included and stuff like that. And I think that's it for mine, unless anyone who was there has anything else to add. I'll take questions if there are any.
Anything else? Yes, Mary?
I, I just want to reiterate that the roofs have been an issue for years and we really absolutely need to do, especially North Wyndham, it sounds like, Wyndham Center. Also, the temporary or portable building in North Wyndham, that, that was supposed to be, you know, mothballed years ago. And then, you know, moving student populations around and, and putting fifth grade back there has made it more crowded. So I would just like us to have an intelligent view about the usage of facilities without being clouded by future plans that may never come to fruition. I, we really want to have the safety of the students and the best utilization of the spaces. And if a middle school's built for four grades, it should have four grades. But, you know, I, I just think that may be part of an issue with get, with that temporary building and the spongy floor. But the roofs, that's a safety issue. And I think it is just outrageous how long it takes to move something like that.
Another considerations is when the Natchog roof leaked, we moved the students to the middle school. But right now we have ECC in the middle school, so there's nowhere to move North Wyndham students if we ever have to move them. We'd have to find a rental space and do a renovation or something like that. There's no swing space currently in any of our buildings with everything going on. This building's full with early childhood, the, the central office and the regular high school population, plus the, the middle school's full. So there's nowhere to move these students if we ever have an issue like that. So that's something we have to keep in mind. We have to be proactive, which is why last year when we were told it was starting to leak, we put it on the capital improvement. It just took until December to get the capital improvement approved.
Right, but now that it's passed.
Right. Now we can start taking action on it and we'll move quickly.
We should try to see if we can move it along.
Yeah.
Yes. And the other thing was at a Board of Finance meeting on, somewhere around November 13th, there was discussion about how many classrooms there are per building. And Dr. Youngberg's going to give us information on that. Like, we have 600 students at a building and there's 90 classrooms and it comes out to, you know, five students per classroom or something like that. And so that conversation, well, while there may be 90 rooms in a building-
Not all classrooms.
At Sweeney, where my children went, I know that the gym teacher's office is in what used to be a shower room.
Right.
And the school psychologist is in what used to be a coat closet. So-
Right.
Those are considered rooms now because they've been renovated to, to be useful space for something other than coats. But saying we have 90 classrooms in a building and 600 students isn't inaccurate.
Isn't accurate.
We might have 17 classrooms and, you know, and 600 students. So Dr. Youngberg said that she would get that information for us in a weekly update.
Right.
And it might be something we need to discuss in a building committee or during finance time.
Yeah.
His office was in a coat-
Ilda or Katina?
Go ahead, Ila.
Which one go, to go first?
Now, how soon will, will we possibly be able to fix the roof at North Wyndham?
Well, they were just saying-
A town committee has to be formed because building committees go through the town. I did the Wells and Natchog roof and the high school roof. So it has to be formed by the town council. And then they need to put out an RFP and an RFQ, solicit bids, and then go through the bidding process and then have the work begin. I called Jim Rivers Monday, I think it was, and I haven't heard back yet. But that's not unusual because I've been busy too. He may have called the home number. And so we're just going to have to set up an appointment and say, we need to start moving on these things.
Right. Don't forget, the, the money was not approved until December 3rd.
Right.
But now that the money's been approved, what's like that timeframe that, from your experience?
RFP usually takes four to six weeks. Once the building committee's formed, the town council has to form the building committee when they can. So as soon as the building committee's formed, they'll meet, they'll put together an RFP, request for proposal, and then they'll go out to bid on that. The bids will come in four to six weeks after that.
So, so it's realistic to say spring?
Well, we can't do it with students in the- Well, we can't do it with students in the building either. So we wouldn't be able to start before the last day of school.
Okay.
You know, they may be in there doing samples and stuff like that on the weekends. And depending on, you know, what, what the bids come in at and how aggressive we are, they may be able to work weekends and stuff like that. I don't, you know, if, if we budgeted 1.3 million, say, and I'm just throwing a number out there.
Right, right.
And the bids all come in at 1-2-9-5, well then, you know, we're not going to be able to pay for overtime or weekends or stuff like that. But if we can get, you know, respectable responses, maybe we can get in. But right now is when construction companies are generally booking for their summer work with schools and stuff. So there may not even be anybody available even to do it next summer.
We have to, we have to get on top of the town council though, to get them to do that in January.
I have a second part to my question.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. I just didn't want to forget. Now, you said that they're in the process now of getting someone out there to repair it, at least temporarily?
You want to give the update?
Sure. So we, we did have Roofing Company come up to patch, they did some temporary patches. The majority, they had big holes in the cafeteria, that was the biggest. And it had never leaked in a cafeteria before, so when it happened, it was the first time. But there was like five pretty good sized leaks. And then there was one in the gym and then smaller ones, you know, in some classrooms. But did come, they, they put temporary patches and the gym and the cafeteria, and they came back today to put, because it started to rain when they were doing the job. So they had to only put temporary, but they did come and they did patch it up today. They only have some classrooms to come back to do, but those are very, very minor. But the worst of one of them are pretty much taken care of for now. And hopefully they hold up through the, through the winter. But I went up on the roof and it, this is North Wyndham and they, we really, really need a roof there. Wyndham Center, I was talking with Joe from the town. Apparently Wyndham Center was bonded for 20 years, the roof, and it's not, we haven't hit the 20-year mark, so they're not going to pay for a new roof until we pass that 20-year mark.
But it's covered under warranty, right?
It's covered under warranty, so they, any leaks due to the roof will, they will come out and patch. So fingers crossed that that one holds up for, I don't, I don't have the, the time, what year the 20 years is right in front of me, but we do have a few more years on that one. But the North Wyndham were past, past due, so that's, as soon as we get a committee ready and, you know, I'm going to start, I'm, I'm, you know, I have to get the ball rolling, so I'll try to get some bids, you know, ahead of time to start moving on that.
Thanks. Katina?
I just wanted to voice my frustration and echo Tracy and Mary. As an ex-staff member at North Wyndham School, I've, we have been complaining about that roof like for many years and several superintendents. And what I cannot get is if it's in the capital improvement of the town and if it was approved a couple of years ago, why didn't that?
Wasn't approved.
The roofs weren't approved till just the past December 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize then for that. Still, I want to voice my frustration because it has never been repaired and the kids are getting wet yet.
North Wyndham's roof was done in 1995, right?
So that's 25 years, yeah.
Since the building was renovated in 86, I still wonder whether it really was replaced in 95. Did they renovate the building without redoing the roof?
Welcome to Wyndham.
I think, I, I, okay, I think, I think we're, we, we all are on the same page on the roof.
It's going to be a short report.
Roof issue, but is there anything else for school planning and design that people have questions about or? Again, you know, you're hearing these reports and if you want to be on a committee, you can let me know.
The town forms a committee, not the boards.
Right, right, yeah.
Lynn?
Yes?
You have anything?
Go right ahead.
I'm kind of a, I, I fall back on, on communication lines or communications. I think basically you need to send a letter to the President of the Council to say we need to get this building committee formed.
Okay.
I don't think we need to deal with Jim. Perhaps she, Lynn, Tracy can still maintain our contact with.
I will do that.
Chairman to chairman, you need to send him a letter saying he needs, because he needs to put it on the agenda for January.
I agree.
Form the committee and move forward.
And the oil tanks.
Fast track it.
I agree.
And the oil tanks that were approved two years ago.
Two, okay.
Oh, that's what's supposed to be, two years ago.
Sorry, so it's just the North Wyndham School then?
I don't have my book in front of me to tell me when those roofs were done. I, I didn't anticipate that question right now, but, but I'm certainly.
She said 95.
No, that's the North Wyndham roof was 95. They said that Wyndham Center was more recent.
Okay, well, somebody, can somebody follow up between Ms. Tomacos and Tracy with me? Thanks. And I will get right on it tomorrow. I don't think I need to send a letter. Well, I mean, I'll email them both and I'll, yeah, I'll communicate with them. And oil tanks.
I think we have an emergency.
Yes.
So, I mean, and safety of the students is an issue important. You should mention that. It is to me like a.
Well.
It's got to be done.
My daughter is a teacher in North Wyndham School, believe you me, I, I hear about, I heard about the leaking roofs, so.
What we don't want to have happen is what happened at Natchog where the.
Yes.
The back collapsed into the building.
No, we don't want that, right, yeah.
And mold. Yeah, that's the thing is mold is going to start creating an issue.
Wyndham Center, the completion of that roof was in 2006.
That's one that the town said it shouldn't have been in the capital improvement. And they're not going to do it until the 20 years, until we get, hit that 20-year mark.
We'll, we'll, we'll follow up on this.
But they need to fix it.
That's Wyndham Center. North Wyndham's not a one.
We'll follow up, thank you.
It's a crummy roof.
And, and Mark?
Well, they should put an umbrella over it.
Thanks for prodding me. Oh, that was good.
Well, you know, you know the jury, the members of the council, so.
I do know the chairman of the council. So Policy Committee, Ida?
Well, first I want to say that was a very thorough report. Good job, Tracy.
Thank you.
You are the right lady for that chair. Womanship. I thank you, Lynn, for appointing me, for having the confidence to appoint me as the Chair of the Policy Committee. We've been working busy on policies. The two that we have right here for you, we have another one that we had at the table, but 3323 and 5131 that we are bringing to you today. One for the first reading, one for the second reading. So now we'll be meeting next week, next Thursday at 5:30 at Central Office. And we're going to be talking about gathering all the policies that we need to look at for the year and prioritizing them. And this way we'll have a list and we can look at them. That way we'll have a list for the whole year of what policies we're looking at. And then, of course, we'll be working closely with the administration that if anything else comes up, happens to come up with a policy that's not on the list, of course, you know, we'll look at it at that point. And we'd love to have input from the other board members at our committee meetings, so. Mine's short. Thank you, the end.
So essentially you're making a plan for a calendar of policy review that will go throughout the year?
Yes. We're going to prioritize the list.
So if anybody has any thoughts on priorities for that plan, you should make sure you let, either go to the meeting next Thursday or let Ida know, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Email or call me.
Any questions?
Or text me.
Executive Committee, now that we've gone through the elections tonight, we're going to have a meeting, I think, probably next Tuesday at, at 6:00 PM, right? You said Monday you couldn't do it because of the building committee?
Right.
Right? So I'll confirm that tomorrow and, and we'll get an agenda posted.
So most likely it will be next Tuesday.
Let's say Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
Say Tuesday.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
Yeah. And those meetings are always at Central Office, Lisa. So we did item eight, one. I think we don't need to talk about board priorities and trainings. I think we'll hold until January. Let you guys get me some feedback based on the things that I laid out earlier on in the meeting. And do we want to add an item to talk about this procurement, business, non-instructural operations first reading? Or do people feel okay about it, what they've read so far?
Should be discussed at the next meeting?
Yeah, okay. Okay. So now we're on to action items. Oh, and the Chair of Policy just disappeared.
Order sent.
What?
All orders sent.
So action items, number one is recommended approval of the second reading of the revised Board Cell Phone Electronic Devices Policy. We, we reviewed this last month and in your board packet, there was an explanation of some clar, it was raised at the board meeting that there needed to be clarification about the definition of an electronic device, for example. And I think that that was done in the, in the redraft that I've seen.
Yes.
But are there any other, is anybody?
You have to have a motion in a second first.
Yeah, yeah, first. Thanks. Motion to accept this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Katina, seconded by Tracy. Now we'll go into discussion.
Yes, I, I, Ida is not here, but I was at the meeting. And we also added and clarified for you to review tonight that some students, because of their different abilities, need to have either laptop or iPad or phone to access. And so we added very specifically that it would be medically recommended part of the IEP or the 504 accommodation plan, so that nobody would come back and say to us, oh, you cannot do this because it's a policy, but it's recommended for the particular student's disability or different ability, I want to say.
For medical needs, exactly.
For medical needs.
Visual, yeah.
So that was the only difference from the discussion of the prior board meeting.
In addition to the clarification.
Clarification.
Right. Tracy?
So we're going to approve this tonight. And then the challenge becomes for Dr. Youngberg, how we're going to implement the, the approval. Have you started thinking about that?
Our schools are actually already trying to manage the cell phones. It's not something new. This is actually going to help us.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Because now we have a little teeth behind the things we're trying to put in place, but it's not an easy thing to do.
No.
I mean, everyone has a phone.
Everyone has a phone and, and different staff members enforce it differently.
We're working on a consistent response to it.
Okay.
Not just for cell phones, but for everything.
Okay.
Because I agree, you need to have a united front on things that you're asking kids to do.
Right, and a united front within a building. It's, you know, a child is in art and the teacher doesn't care and the child goes to math and the teacher's like, give me your phone. You know, that, that creates some of the problem. It's something similar to what we saw with uniforms. Students come in, you know, not in uniform for a second, third period, and then the fifth period teacher is the bad guy for calling it out. So those are things that, that, you know, implementation is just as important as the policy. Thank you.
Any more discussion on this?
Okay, I'm.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm looking at this statement that says, that talks about the students storing their phones in book bags, backpacks, except is set forth below. And then there isn't anything set forth below, so, yeah, so, I mean.
Might be said above.
Except is, except is set forth below doesn't seem to lead anywhere. There was a, there was an.
Where are you looking at this?
Oh, this is all the way at, almost at the end. It's, it's on page 40.
Oh, it's all of our errors, huh?
Yes.
He notices all our errors.
Yes, it probably meant to say, as I said, above in reference to the medically indicated use of the iPads.
Okay, well, I mean, it's an edit, so you can, the thing can be edited. We don't have to send it back to committee to be edited, but it, it, it needs to say where the reference is. If there are going to be exceptions, that you need to say where they are. There was, I don't know whether other people saw it, but there was an editorial in the Chronicle on this very thing. And what the editorial questioned was whether or not high school students could be responsible enough to store their phones on their person. That is, can, 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 can our, can our high scho, are our high school students mature enough to basically silence their phones and put them in their pockets and carry them with them rather than having to leave them in their lockers or, or somewhere else? Now, I don't know the answer to that one. And I, I mean, the newspaper had its own position, but it did occur to me that, you know, we pass this thing, it's fine, but this, this technology changes fast, the needs change fast. This is something that we may want to think about and come back to. This policy will probably keep turning up again and again.
As with any policy, yes.
Yes, but this one is more prone to it than some others because, but, but, but there may be some discussion within the high school about, about whether the students are mature enough to carry the phones on them. What does the staff think of that?
Well, let's.
And we don't need to settle that tonight, but I.
See what happens.
Yes, I, I think we ought to pass a policy as it is. I'm just saying that that's a question that's already come up in the community from somewhere and you may want to keep thinking about it.
That's assuming you have pockets. That's obviously was written by a man.
Yes, because women have any of their little pockets on all their hands.
A lot of women's wallets don't have pockets.
I think it said in the paper, I think it, I'm sorry, on their person was what the idea was. They can carry it with them.
Okay.
Just don't have it out.
So, okay, any further discussion on this? Are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the policy?
Aye.
And, okay. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is recommended approval of signature change for the Connecticut State Department of Education Bureau of Health, Nutrition, Family Service and Adult Education Child Nutrition Program. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve what Lynn said.
Second.
Tracy and Mark. Now, this seems just to be a pro forma thing since we have a change in superintendent that we have to actually change the signator.
Right.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Okay, unanimous, okay. And then finally for action, recommended approval of the budget transfers, which are included in the packet. I'll entertain a motion and then we can entertain questions.
So moved.
Second.
Tracy and Mark, they've got the, the rhythm going there on first and second.
Yeah, they're ready, keep it going.
So the budget transfers are in the packet. Is there any, are there any questions or anything people would like to bring up? Yes, Tracy?
I was unable to attend the meeting last night because I was under the weather. I was unable to attend the meeting last night because I was under the weather. Mark will tell you, I was taking a nap, which isn't untrue, but after work I fell asleep and didn't wake up in time. I was not feeling great. So we moved money from the high school in two different locations into other places, Sweeney Instructional Supplies and W ECC Pupil Services. One was WHS salaries, and another was WHS instructional supplies. What is the high school going without? And I understand there's a need, and I understand these transfers are important, but what is the high school giving up? Are we, are these vacancies we're not filling? Are these positions that we've had to cut?
Could you just give me a number that you're referring to?
I am looking 22 and 23.
22.
Or 23, 22 and 20.
If you look at the last page.
All 22s.
They're on the last page.
Are they all 22s? Last page, the last two or three.
Okay.
They should be 22, 23, 24, and 25. There's a small...
Usually they are, that's why.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Just read it, that's okay.
Okay.
Number 22 and 22 and 20, 20 and 25. So I wasn't at the meeting, and I apologize for that, but, what is the high school giving up?
That, I'm not sure. The problem was that the instructional supply line, their main instructional supply line was cut by, when I put the new budget in, based on last year.
Okay.
So whatever was proposed in the budget book, I put it, and it was cut by $25,000, or actually a little bit more than that, because we have another transfer below for them, and they need supplies. They need paper.
So we gave the high school money.
Oh, so we gave the high school money, okay. So then what did Sweeney and W ECC give up?
We're giving them money. So we're taking it out of...
High school salaries, okay, I was reading it right, and giving it to early childhood.
Oh, are we on a different one now?
Second to the last one.
Right near the end.
2C.
Okay, that's, this is a, that's a totally different scenario. So what we did with the high school salaries aides, I believe it's in the, we moved the aid into the IDB funds because we had an issue with the contracted services being covered by Medicaid. So we couldn't, we can't put the contracted services into IDB because federally funded expenses cannot be reimbursed by Medicaid. So we did, that's why we're doing this little swap.
Okay, so it's more grant swap than it is moving positions.
Correct. It's, yeah, exactly.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. On that last one too, it says 54, 54410, building rental?
So we are saving money on the Kramer utilities, because we're no longer in Kramer. So there, it was budgeted for utilities and rentals. It was in the rental line, so that's where we took the money to give to the schools for supplies.
All right, good.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the transfers?
Thank you, Reader, for your explanations. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
I didn't even notice it was wrong until I said 22 and then realized 22, 22, 22.
I like the 22C though.
So, final item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak during public comment?
Public comment?
Anybody who wants to speak during public comment?
Public is silent.
Okay.
Satisfied.
Entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:52?
A second now.
Second? A meeting adjourned at 8:52.